Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the work session for the city council on March twenty-sixth at six P M. Welcome everyone. Our only item is a discussion regarding the City of Flugerville's Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Plan. Jeremy?
Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to be here with you today. Tonight, we have Robin Vega as our Assistant Planning and Development Services Director. She's taking the lead on the consolidated plan. And so I'm going to introduce her, and she will also be leading efforts with our C D B G program.
Okay, good.
With that, I'll turn it over to Robin.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Robin Vega, Assistant Director of Planning and Development Services. With us tonight are W F N consulting, and this is Erica Gamble. And she's been the project lead on our consolidated plan. And Lashandra Wells is also assistant with that process. So with that, I'll let them get started with their presentation.
Okay, sounds good.
Sounds good. Hello, everybody. She said I'm Erica Gamble. So we're going to talk about the twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-eight consolidated plan and the twenty twenty-four action. So later in- The presentation, we'll have some additional information about what these plans are. The echo got me.
Okay, there we go.
Alright, so agenda. So we'll do some, well, we've already done welcome and introductions. We'll talk about the planning documents, some of the funding categories, what the planning process looks like, our consultations, and the data that we'll be using to develop these plans, and then the next steps in the process. So two onsite consultants today, myself and Lashandra. I've been with the company since twenty-ten, so about fourteen years. I've been primarily working with consolidated plans, action plans, various other areas of the HUD grant programs for that entire time. Lashandra's been with us since twenty-fifteen, so she just completed her ninth year with the company. So we are quite versed in the HUD realm of programming and things like that. So hopefully, we'll be able to assist the city and provide a plan that's going to be something that you all would be proud of. Okay, so I told you we'd talk about those particular planning documents. So there are two. One is the consolidated plan, which is essentially a five-year strategic plan. This is something that the city's required to do every five years in order to receive your community development block grant funds. That plan really helps the city to identify any community development needs, any housing needs, homelessness needs, or any other priorities of the city. So we'll give you guys the opportunity to provide some feedback at the end of the presentation as to what the needs are in the community. And then the annual action plan, you all may be familiar with this one. The annual action plan really gives the, kind of gives legs to that consolidated plan. So the consolidated plan is a five-year strategic plan. The annual action plan is a plan that's submitted every year that lets the federal government or HUD, it lets them know how the city's going to use their funding in that particular grant year. So that's done every year. So for this time, we'll do a five-year plan and an action plan at the same time. Okay? Alright, so some of the funding objectives for a community development block grant. One of the things that we're required to do is to develop communities through decent housing, suitable living environments, or expanded economic opportunity. By far, most cities, most counties that receive this fund use it for the suitable living environment. That's very broad. It covers a lot of aspects of the community. The other two, decent housing is just like it sounds. It's all about housing. And the expanded economic opportunity, that's more like your economic development, things like that. Like I said, the suitable living environment is used by most cities and counties, and that includes things like roads, parks, community services, things of that nature. Okay? And then anything that you all are doing must result in one of the following national objectives. So it must either benefit low and moderate income persons. And so when we say low and moderate income, we're looking at people who are earning less than eighty percent of the area median income. That would be considered low income. And then the other way to, the other objective is to prevent or eliminate slums and blight. This one is not so popular, it's not so, not something that a lot of cities use the funds for. And even a less used option is meeting an urgent need. So that would be something like a natural disaster or something like that. The president would have to declare that there's an urgent need, I'm sorry, that there's a natural disaster. And then the city would have to decide that you wanted to use your C D B G funds for that purpose. A lot of times, cities don't do that just because usually if there's something that catastrophic that happens, the federal government typically will open up additional funds.
So an example of that might be, there's a bad flood, we need some flood control, flood prevention measures put in place. We could use the C D B G funds for that purpose.
And it would have to be declared by the president. So it takes a little more doing than to just say, you know, we want to use our C D B G funds.
Let me ask you, Erica, so you said a declaration by the president, I believe you said. Would it also have to be coupled with a declaration by the governor of the state?
No, it's just the president, because these are federal dollars. Yeah, these are federal dollars. And so it would be the president and then your council here that would have to approve that. So when we look at this map, the areas in blue here represent, let me go back one slide, because I didn't mention. So under low and moderate income persons, you'll see two categories listed there, low mod area and low mod clientele. That map that I just showed, that really speaks to the low mod area. So if you're thinking about doing things like parks, sidewalks, things that are available to the community at large, you would want to be doing those in low-income areas. And that's defined as fifty-one percent of the people meeting that, that low-income threshold. So we'll show you in just a moment that, that slide with the map. And then the low mod clientele, that's primarily for individuals who are receiving services. So city staff or nonprofits or whomever is using the funds, they would ensure that the person receiving those services is earning less than eighty percent of the area median income. So when we look at the map here, all the areas-
What constitutes the area?
I'm sorry?
What constitutes the area?
The Flugerville, the city of Flugerville. Yeah, city of Flugerville. So the blue areas that I highlighted here, those are areas that have been deemed as low income. So you'll see they're denoted by census tract here. Okay? Alright, so we'll talk about some eligible activities.
Sure.
Yeah, can we get a copy of that map?
I'm looking at that, I'm seeing mostly not Flugerville.
Well, right, right. It's the overlapping areas with city limits where we can expend the funds.
It's just that it's not as big. Yeah, we did, because a lot of that area, we see E T J, but we also see area that's a lot of farmland and other things over there.
Yeah, I mean, we've got some economic opportunity areas there. We've got very, very little residential.
Yeah, but what's interesting about that is those economic, those aren't necessarily fall into economic opportunity zones that we always delineated. So that's an interesting juxtaposition. How did you come up with this map?
It was actually provided by our G I S staff, and it's provided to us by HUD.
As of January twenty-twenty-two?
Yes, that's the date on the map.
So do we, I mean, how long does it, does a definition of an economic opportunity zone last? So in other words, if some of these areas that we see here, we designate today, and then ten years from now, they see explosive growth, and they might not qualify then, but they're already grandfathered in. Is there some, something there?
Yes. So this map is as of twenty-twenty-two. With this five-year consolidated plan, these maps will be updated with new numbers based on new census data.
So we get a five-year window?
Yes.
So it does expire. Gotcha.
But I guess it doesn't expire, but it updates.
Jeremy? Either, either way, you get the same effect.
We, we can spend money in these areas now, and if the blue areas shift in the future, then that changes where we're spending money. If we put a plan in place today, and tomorrow the areas change, does our plan hold true because we filed the plan based on the areas? Or do we have to go back and change everything because the foundation?
These are things that you should be looking at annually when you're submitting your annual plans. So you need to look at that year over year to make sure that the, the numbers in the communities have shifted.
Let's push that even further then, okay? So for what his point is saying is that, okay, if we're looking at this annually, we execute a plan nine months prior to ultimately it shifting, that plan is still grandfathered in, or is the grandfathered in because it fell in before that time period changed, correct? So is it executable? Does the action on that plan have to take place in there? Or does that action in that plan can take place after the shift has happened because we had that plan in place prior to that a year?
Okay, that's a lot to unpack. So what, what typically happens, you'll submit your plan. Your plans do in August. Your plan year starts October one. When the city's looking at projects that they may want to undertake, they're going to look in these areas. But you can let me know if this is what you all do. Typically, when you're looking at a specific project, you're going to qualify that project for services on that project. This map is kind of more of a general nature, like you know where to stay away from.
When you're going to what I'm saying. So if you have a project that you denoted specifically in that time period, while this map is, is still reflective of that, but it changes consequently nine, ten months later, and you haven't executed on that action yet, does that mean that it no longer qualifies?
Well, it's at the time that you qualify.
Okay, so, so it, so it is grandfathered.
Well, so when, when does the, when does the map update? When do the areas update? When do they provide us with the new data?
So the new data is annually. So that comes out, so that's annual census data that's available.
When, when is it released? Is it like August, October? But our plan year is October, so I'm just trying to understand the cadence.
Fiscal year or calendar year?
Your year is, is a fiscal year.
So they release this data every year, but-
Okay, so it's random. Okay.
But no telling when. Okay. So we have to get our, we have to set our plan and get our plan approved before they make changes.
So you get your plan approved, and then when the-
Then we're good.
Staff is working on projects, they will check it at that moment in time to ensure that it's still holds true.
Alright, I think we went too deep on that.
No, no, because the reason why I find it really interesting is that even ten years ago, I'm saying ten years ago. Let's say twelve, thirteen years ago, there were a lot of homes that had F D A exemptions that you could go ahead and get great value on, specifically you actually in those homes, because it just fell in because of this, of the federal plan. You were able to get those loans because it was like, oh yeah, this is farmland, this is area, absolutely will give you a great place on your homes. And what would happen is that people wouldn't build those homes during that time period. But ultimately, when they built those homes, the land had already changed, and it's a completely different community. But they would still get those values because they locked in that plan when it did reflect, because of the H homes right there as well.
Any other questions?
Okay, so the level of detail there is a little difficult to read. Is Yellow Sage included in the blue area on the west or? Okay, and it, and the edge of the blue area is just east of Yellow Sage, is that right? Is that Windermere? Is that the, the line on the, on the, the east end of the blue area?
I want to say that it was over near Yellow Sage, down to Piccon Street.
I'm just trying to figure out what that, that line is there.
Because I can't.
Oh, do you mean right at the moment?
Yeah, yeah. Because it's already, yeah, have you seen it?
No, no, it's electronically helping.
Is it in the packet?
I mean, that, that line right there, you're talking about is Heatherwell. Is that, that is Heatherwell? Okay. That's what I needed. Thank you.
Actually, I read what you sent me.
You do?
Okay. Alright, so we'll move on to eligible activities under the grant program. One of the things that we're able to do is the administrative costs, the cost of the staff to be able to administer the programs. There is a twenty percent cap on those funds, so the city cannot use more than twenty percent of their grant funds for that purpose. Economic development-
Which isn't a bad thing, because that's how we recoup and denote some other resources if we can utilize those funds toward actual administration.
Yeah. So it's a twenty percent cap there. Economic development is another category that you can use your funds in. There's no cap on that. One of the things that's popular under this particular category is things like job training. So that's, you know, training your citizens for the, the work that's available here in the city.
And that's where, and I got to give, I was going to say, I knew I was almost going to say Amy. Emily, a lot of credit, working with Workforce Solutions Capital Areas to actually work on that and try to utilize those funds for job training.
Homeowner housing rehabilitation. So that's a really popular program with a lot of cities that use the C D B G funds. It can allow you to assist homeowners with maintaining their homes. So things like repairing a roof or replacing windows or replacing a hot water heater, things like that.
Does, does it have to be something for internal use, external use? Is there any limit to what, the rebitels?
Yeah, there are some limitations, but primarily it's, it's the internal, and you can do a roof or windows and things like that. I would stay away from doing things like yard maintenance, things like that are not eligible.
What about a fence that's been swept away by a flood?
That, that probably would not be eligible.
Even though that's, even though there was a federal disaster for a flood, you wouldn't be able to use the C D B G funds to replace fences?
Let's be clear, for the rehabilitation, it doesn't have to be a federal disaster for you to be able to use it in that way.
But you still wouldn't be able to use it for a fence, even if it's not a federal disaster? That rehab would not, would not cover-
It's meant to prevent displacement, correct? Right. It's meant to keep people in their homes.
I would imagine.
Could lead to displacement.
The best category for that is like weatherization, home safety, things of that nature.
Yeah. So we want to think about those types of things.
If someone had a dangerous dog and we needed to make sure the fence was taken up to that.
Yeah, probably not. The other thing I think you may be more familiar with is this public facilities and infrastructure category. So that would be things like street improvements, wastewater improvements, parks, sidewalk improvements, building acquisitions, or construction of buildings, things of that nature. So that could be like health centers or community centers, things of that nature. And then the last category here is public services. And so this includes things like operating costs for nonprofits to provide services to your residents, things like childcare, healthcare, youth services, senior services, those sorts of activities. And HUD has imposed a fifteen percent cap on funds for that purpose. So you cannot use more than fifteen percent of your annual allocation for those types of activities. Alright, so some of the previous projects that the city has used for, used C D B G for would be the reconstruction of four streets in the community. So Bellme, Yellow Sage, El Malino, and Green Meadows. So those are some of the activities that's taken place over the years. New sidewalks to provide safer routes to school. So Pigeon Forge and Edgemere subdivision, so the city added some sidewalks in there. ADA improvements to the parks, to the park at Windermere. So those are some of the activities under that infrastructure category. And then community services, some of the things that the cities, some of the initiatives include the youth and senior scholarships, tablets and internet, and training for seniors during the pandemic. So that's a big one. And then workforce training. So these are some of the activities that you all have approved over the years that have been successful in the community using the Community Development Block Grant.
Can you tell me more about the youth and senior scholarships? What is that, what does that look like?
So youth are able to, there's an application process, and then they're able to request activities through the rec center. So there's a, for the youth, there's a two-hundred-dollar cap on how much they can utilize. I know we've paid for fun camp in the summer. Currently, we have twenty-seven youth have been approved to use it for this summer, and then there's twenty-nine that are waiting on eligible, like their incomer availability. We've seen a huge increase this year compared to last year. I think we had fewer than ten that applied last year.
We always do. What, what's the change? Because I also saw that our fun camp's almost at eighty-three percent full already. So what's the change from people actually doing the-
We did a lot of engagement this year. We did, we've done, the Q R code has been everywhere. And so we've just had it available. We made sure they were at the library, at the rec center. There was also for the senior scholarships, they're able to utilize that for membership to rec center or any of those activities that they're able to sign up for.
Excellent. That's, that's phenomenal.
Yeah.
That's, that's a long time coming.
Okay, so the planning process for this, this consolidated plan, we kind of break it down into three distinct phases. So phase one is kind of what we're doing here this week with you all, with the general public, with some of the stakeholders in your community, is what we call community input. So part of the consolidated plan requires us to do some consultation with people in the community to really find out what the needs are in the community. So we do that by hosting meetings, setting up interviews with specific stakeholders, collecting data. And this just really ensures-
Stakeholders?
I'm sorry?
How do you select the stakeholders?
These are people that are usually working with community development. There are some that are, that we kind of seek out. So that would be folks like your housing authority, people like homeless service providers and things like that. So those are some that we seek out, and then we have others.
Mandatory, correct?
Under the consolidated plan, they're more suggested, not necessarily mandatory on some other-
Highly suggested?
Highly suggested, yes. Under, under other grant programs, a lot of the stuff that came through under COVID, CARES Act, affordable housing, all of that stuff, those were required. So they were required consultations. Under this plan, it's highly recommended, and usually we don't have an issue getting people to participate and provide their input. So. So that's the, the first phase, is kind of doing that fact finding, gathering information and things of that nature.
How long does that take?
Sure. We usually give a few months. So we started the, the survey that's out, we started that about two weeks ago. And so far, we've, last I looked, we had over two hundred surveys completed, which is really good for a city this size. You know, we've, we've worked with places where we might get forty surveys completed, no matter how hard we push. So you guys have really been getting after it, and that's really good. So I'm really proud of that, and it gives us a good-
Makes a difference here?
I think you all are really pushing it forward. I hear that Facebook is really, really a good driver of that. So, and some of the city staff has been out to a few events that's taken place, just to really kind of get the word out that a survey is available and that we need your input on it. So I think that's really been making a difference. So that's really good. And it's really good for us, and it's really helpful for us to really see what the, what people are saying the needs are versus what a council may say. And it's really good for us and it's really helpful for us to really see um, what the, what people are saying the needs are versus what um, a council may say or what staff may say. We're really getting input from the general community.
Are you saying we're not relatable authorities on this stuff?
No, you are, but we like to hear from them as well. So we wanna, we want a nice round, um, a nice well-rounded uh, level of input. And so that's really providing that for us. Um, so phase two, uh, we call that our analysis phase. So we'll take all the information that we're gathering here this week. Um, we'll take uh, all the information from the surveys and we come, start to compile that. Um, we look at some other empirical data, which we'll go through a list of that, um, I believe from the next slide. Um, so we'll look at all of that data, we'll look at the input that we're gathering here this week. And then uh, start to form some uh, ideas about what goals and priorities um, should be. Um, once we kind of come up with those goals and priorities, we work with city staff to make sure that that makes sense. Um, based on the historical things that staff knows, kind of what we're uh, gathering here this weekend, what the data shows. To make sure those types of things still make sense. Um, and so we'll come up with those priorities, we'll come up with those goals. And then that goes into the, the first draft that we'll have, and that kind of leads us to phase three. Uh, once we have a draft of the document, we come back out and we talk to the public again to say, hey, this is what we um, came up with as far as what priorities are, what goals could be. Um, for this next five-year period. And you all get a chance to say, yes, we agree with that, or no, we do not agree with that, we think we need to add this, or we need to take away some things, we need to add some additional things.
So can the goals and priorities be amended throughout the five years?
They can, and that's what's called a substantial amendment. So that's a, a, that's an option that HUD does provide for you, because we know that things may change um, over the next five years. So you may, you know, now today, we may say that uh, you know, one thing is, you know, really pressing, but in a couple of years, that could change. And um, HUD does give you an opportunity to make um, those changes throughout the consolidated plan period. So once we have our, our drafts available, then what we need to do is come back to you all, bring the plans for uh, forward uh, for um, approval from city council. So you'll have to approve the plan and then we get it submitted to HUD. So it has to be submitted to HUD um, by the middle of August, so August sixteenth is the uh, drop deadline for that. So we are uh, looking, we'll, we'll get to that on the next slide, so you'll, you'll be able to see it. Um, all of the next dates and all of that good stuff. Alright, maybe not the next slide, but we'll get into it. So um, when we talked about consultations earlier, um, we kind of break that down into three kind of broad categories. So our primary stakeholders, that would be folks like yourself, city staff, um, you all are really responsible for the, the money. So kind of you all have the final say. Um, so you are the primary stakeholders in this process, um, the key decision makers. Um, the secondary stakeholders, these will be um, you know, other agencies, your nonprofit agencies, your departments, things like that. People who are actually using the funds to provide services. Um, and they'd be able to provide some critical feedback to us about what the needs are in the community and things like that. Um, and then general stakeholders. So this would be anybody that's generally interested in community development, any uh, residents that live in the area that want to provide input. So that can be any and everyone. Okay, so some of the data that we look at, uh, when we're completing this process, um, obviously we talked about census data earlier. So we look at um, another set of data called HUD CHAS data or Comprehensive Housing Affordability Strategy. And so that looks at um, some various housing uh, related uh, issues um, that may be happening here. So we look at that data, we look at our survey, look at those results, any stakeholder interviews, our public meetings. We look at how you've been investing in uh, infrastructure. And then we look at any other kind of prior works of um, prior research and any concurrent research. So we'll look at all of those things and um, you know.
Where, where does the HUD uh, uh, CHAS data come from?
Um, it's derived from census data, um, but HUD takes it and further crunches it down. And so they'll be able to give us things like housing affordability or cost burden. So we'll be able to see, you know, if people are using more than thirty percent of their income for housing-related expenses. And then it'll also look at folks who may be what we call severe cost burden, using more than fifty percent of their income um, on housing-related expenses. So uh, HUD takes that cen- census data and they further crunch it down, so to give us some.
So that would be available to us at some point?
Yes, yes. It'll be a part of the plan.
Okay.
So you'll see it kind of uh, throughout the document. Okay, so the next steps in this process, um, we'll identify those needs. Um, we're, we're having, uh, we had a stakeholders meeting earlier today. And then we'll have another meeting for the general community tomorrow evening, um, at six PM at the Windermere Community Center. Um, then once we kind of get through all of that, we start to, like I said before, develop those key priorities um, and the first draft of the document. And so you'll see here in the third bullet, there's a kind of a various list of the next meetings that will take place. So there's a city council workshop on June fourth. Um, our public comment period uh, will be held from June fifth to July fifth. Um, and that is a requirement of the plan, there's a thirty-day uh, public comment period that uh, we must hold in order to uh, be in compliance with the grant program.
And that's public comment from the targeted areas only?
Well, it's from the general public. It could be people in the targeted area or anyone that has a comment on the document.
Okay.
Um, and then we'll do some additional community meetings um, from June, on June twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. So that'll give our people an opportunity to see the draft plan, to make comment on the plan. And uh, provide us with an opportunity to make revisions if necessary. And then we'll uh, have a meeting with uh, Planning and Zoning on uh, July first. So that'll go before them on that day. And then we, once we finalize the documents with everybody's, you know, revisions and things like that, we'll come back to council on July ninth for approval. So we'll come here, you know, seeking approval for that and then get the plan uh, submitted to HUD by uh, no later than August sixteenth.
I want to make sure I understand the thirty-day period. So you mean there needs to be thirty days between the city council workshop and the city council approval? Or you mean there needs to be uh, thirty days between the community meetings and final city council approval? Or thirty days between council approval and submission to HUD?
No, it needs to be thirty days prior to council approval. So that's the HUD standard. Now you all may have different city rules, okay?
So that it has to be presented at the, the council workshop, June ninth, in order for us to approve it on the July ninth deadline?
July ninth.
But we could theoretically, we could, we could approve it on a, the second July meeting or the first August meeting and still meet the deadlines, is that correct?
I'm sorry.
I just want to make sure that I understand what flexibility we have in terms of when we act. Uh, July ninth is the only date we could do it? Could we do it two weeks later than that? Could we do it in the first August meeting?
There is technically one meeting that uh, is immediately prior to August sixteenth, which is our absolute last day, we can submit that.
So we could, we could make changes and do the approval at that point? Or is there a drop dead deadline when we can't make any more changes thirty days before August sixteen? I'm, I'm just trying to make sure, understand what our, what our flexibility is.
Uh, you would be required to act on the plan prior to August sixteenth. So if at the meeting on July the ninth, you were not com- comfortable with that document, you could pu- postpone it to the next council meeting, which would be this, that first meeting in August. And then at that first meeting in August, we would need action, otherwise we would not be in compliance with HUD's requirement.
Okay. Alright, so we'll have, we'll, we'll have two bites at the apple.
Yes, sir. And I apologize, there is a typo on the screen. The workshop will be on the eleventh, I believe, the fourth is not the council day. Apologies for that.
Okay.
Alright, so this is a flyer that's been circulating um, out in the community. Um, it includes uh, the QR code that people are able to scan, um, to take the survey. Uh, there are links for the survey if you're not able to use QR code. Um, and it gives them an option to attend one of the two meetings uh, that's scheduled.
How well was uh, your meeting attended today?
Um, we had about ten people who showed up from various uh, nonprofit organizations and they had a good amount of feedback um, to provide.
Awesome.
So it's good.
Alright, so at this time, I'll give you guys just a brief moment, if there are things you'd like to um, add to the conversation.
I had a question on slide one, but I forgot what it was now.
Do you want me to go back?
No, that's alright.
Okay.
Well, let me just say I love using this money for infrastructure.
Okay, good.
To the extent we can improve the roads and the, uh, and the water and the parks with this money. That's, those are things that uh, that I'd like to see, particularly in the older parts of, of town. Uh, where some of that was maybe built at, at a level that's not up to the standards we have today. Uh, if we can move that uh, and improve the quality of life for people in those areas. That uh, that seems to me to be a particularly worthy use of those funds.
I think historically, historically, that's what we've done, so that wouldn't, that'd just be called Tuesday. Um, you know, I mean, quite literally, yeah, that's what we've done historically, which is interesting about that. I'd be interested to see just some other innovative things that we're not cognizant aware of, that you haven't come up with utilization. Because we know we're going to do that, cause we've done an excellent job of that and we get the feedback from folks regarding, we do regarding infrastructure, um, reclamation projects. But something that we're not aware of or cognizant of right there from that, I think that's, that's really interesting. Um, I'd love hearing what you said about the scholarships being finally, finally, being utilized by people right there. I mean, that says a lot about what y'all are doing, um, going down those doors, talking to folks about that, making themselves accessible. But what other things are we, other cities, other entities utilizing these funds for that we're not cognizant for? I'd be interested to know that.
Um, I wanted to know more about some examples of uh, suitable living and decent housing that you said many cities are um, using. Um, and while we're putting our platforms out there, I'm always gonna be about affordable housing and modeling for those with lived experience.
Okay, so uh, when you think about suitable living environment, it's really what uh, Councilman Rogers just stated. So all of those things like uh, infrastructure, so that would be like your parks, your community centers. Um, really anything that's not economic development, not housing, falls under that suitable living environment. So that's just the, the neighborhoods and communities that we live in. So there's um, CDBG is a really, really broad grant. Um, it kind of covers the gamut. Most things can be eligible um, in some capacity.
So what you're saying is quality broadband internet is, would fit right up under that criteria?
It would, yeah, absolutely.
Cause we know that there's some folks around that sort of use it for that. Well, Councilman Rogers would agree, but you know.
What we need to do is subsidize Google to make that happen.
No, so obviously, we can, we can do a lot with CBG, CDBG funds. Uh, we're just really restricted in the areas where we can do, do a lot of things, um, physically, or geographically, I should say. Uh, but, but I'm, I'm curious to Councilmember Rogers' point and, and to our past history with infrastructure and, and improvements like that. Uh, i- is there an extension of that? You know, we, we've done roads, we've done sidewalks, can we do lighting, can we do?
Water towers.
It, ADA improvements, um, things like that.
All of that, all of that is eligible under the grant.
But they have to be within those specific.
In those areas, so you're looking at, yeah, in those low-income areas. So the primary goal of CDBG is to benefit low and moderate income persons. So that's the primary overarching goal um, of the program. So when you're thinking about, you know, your community development activities, you want to be thinking about where are the low-income clientele? Where, where are those people residing? And how can we improve their communities to make them a better living environment?
Well, to that, to that point, Jeremy, you might be able to help me with this. I didn't see on that map some of the areas that we've been working on, say, you know, Yellow Sage and all that other stuff, so they're no longer in there?
No, they, they are, they were on that western end.
Were they in there? Okay, I missed it. So we need, she, um, Trista sent us the map, you still have to scroll in, but you can see, it's hard, it's hard to see. Alright, on this map, you can see, okay, alright, there we go then, alright. I was a little concerned about some of the areas I didn't see on there that I know are low income, but.
One of the areas that, that fluctuates in and out is the Gallenburg area. And so that's where, as development continues to occur to the south and, you know, homes are, are increasing and, and values are changing over in that quadrant. That's where some of that has been cautioned.
Well, and this doesn't represent even some of the new subdivisions that are on the, on the east side, developed over there, um, that are coming over there. That's what I was surprised to see, um, cause I've, I would assume they would be able to capture them there too as well. When, when, when you resend this out in our packet, can we get a, a fidelity at this level? Because this one right here is kind of still a little, it's got that. Yeah.
Is it?
Erica, if um, so I note, it sounded like there, we can't use it for housing. But can we use it for um, to, to build uh, offices? So for instance, if I wanted to build uh, a, a uh, battered spouse's shelter, uh, and, and put it in one of these areas? Can I use it for, for funding something like that?
Yes, and you can, uh, on the housing component, um, you can't build new housing uh, with CDBG. But you can do things like housing rehab that is eligible, um, but you just can't build a new house.
So you're, you're saying that if we have a home that's been dilapidated, we can utilize the funds to reclimate the project? And still, and have that home done specifically for, you know, battered, battered spouses, et cetera, right there. We can do that.
Well, that's kind of two different things.
We, we could actually build a new battered spouse shelter.
Yes.
Ground up, perfectly fine, and any other uh, house that is dilapidated, we could, we, we could improve that regardless of the use. Even if uh, the low-income, low to moderate income individual continues to live in that area.
Right, if a low and moderate income homeowner has a home that is dilapidated or needing repairs.
In the blue areas.
Well, for, for that program, it doesn't have to be in the blue areas, because that particular person, that's clientele, exactly.
Okay, okay.
So they would qualify to have their home repaired.
Okay.
So if they lived in a really nice area and their income is now low.
As long as they can show qualifications for that. And, but we could build, like I said, a battered spouse area. What about a, what about a warming center?
A what?
Warming center.
Yeah, absolutely.
Could we work with an organization like Habitat to subsidize uh, the work that Habitat for Humanity does? And they, that way those dollars might go further by, by working in conjunction with.
A lot of cities use, uh, work with Habitat, sometimes they acquire the land that they're gonna actually build a structure on. Um, we see it used that way quite often. Um, and that's kind of the easiest path to success when you're working with a group like Habitat. Um, it's for the city to use their grant funds just to acquire the land, um, that they will then be, build on.
Okay.
I, I believe Judge Brown is putting a focus on mental health, uh, is, is that fall within a category as well?
Under that public services category, so unfortunately, it's gonna be a smaller pot of money, but it is um.
Sounds like we have a lot of opportunities. I'm hoping we have a lot of money for that, right?
It is noteworthy that we get in the high two hundreds annually to spend, uh, that's been historically what we've received, yeah.
Yeah, and the county does notice what we get, cause we're one of the few cities who, we get it ourselves and utilize it ourselves.
Right.
Okay. Alright, anything else, counsel? Well, thank you very much for being here today. Very informative, thank you, Jeremy and Rob and Erica, Rashonda, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Alright, uh, having no other items on the agenda, we are adjourned for the work session.